Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We have our five minutes. We have our break. Please take a seat. If you would be seated, we will go forward with Article 26. Mr. Beistrum, where are you, sir? Mr. Beistrum is here. Mr. Beistrum moves that for the balance of the meeting, the time per speaker be reduced to two minutes. Mr. Beistrum has moved that we, for the balance of the meeting, reduce the time per speaker to two minutes. Again, there'll still be a reasonable degree of flexibility up to two minutes and one second. All those in favor of the motion as offered by Mr. Beistrum say aye. Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. Article 26, if the city of the town vote to appropriate transfer the sum of $850,000 from free cash for appropriation of the Cape Cod Water Resources remediation project. For motion, Mr. Dykens.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $850,000 from free cash for appropriation to the Cape Cod Water Resources remediation account.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Whelan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article allows Chatham to receive grant funds that will pay for three quarters of what we contribute to the Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Plan. The Finance Committee voted seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan. Further discussion under Article 26. If there is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as offered by Mr. Dykens say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. So voted unanimously Article 27, to see if the town vote to appropriate transfer from the free cash sum of $1,495,555 in regard to design and construction of the former Eldridge Garage. For motion, Mr. Kokolas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to appropriate transfer from free cash to sum of $1,495,555, as may be offset by any grants or contributions that may be available toward the cost of said project from private donations to federal government, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or otherwise for the design and construction of site and building improvements, as the select board shall deem appropriate on the town-owned property located at 365 Main Street, also identified as a census map, 16C-82-66 and 16D-2-4.
Thank you, Mr. Kokolas. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Discussion under Article 27. Ms. Patterson, or Ms. Donovan, and then Ms. Patterson. Ms. Donovan, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to inform Town Meeting of two developments since the warrant was printed. The Historic Business District Commission approved the project on May 4th, and the project will still need approval from the Planning Board for Site Plan Approval. The other item I would wish to let Town Meeting know is that the town has been contacted by a seasonal resident who would like to make a donation to the town for the entire cost of the project. Attorneys for the donors are working with Town Council on finalizing the donation agreement, and the agreement will reflect that funds will be released to the town based on four agreed milestones at 25% reimbursement for each milestone. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. That's quite enough. Ms. Patterson.
Judy Patterson, West Chatham. That little spin just puts a different...whatever. My comments about this is that years ago, we voted to fix this building up. The people in town, for whatever reason, didn't fix it up. The building is gone. It's non-salvageable. And we're asking to fund monies to rebuild it around with restrooms. Let's take into consideration that we have restrooms at Oyster Pond, in the back of the Orpheum, Town Offices, Kate Gould Park, the Windmill, the Lighthouse, the Community Center, and the Fish Pier for starters. How many restrooms does one town need? This is an outrageous expense. Even now, if somebody else is going to donate the money, $1,500,000 for restrooms, wouldn't this property be better serving us if we put some habitat for housing there and made a nice little area for people to park? I mean, everybody's complaining about affordable housing. This place has been an eyesore for three years. Let's put our money where our mouth is and build some housing for some, you know, attainable workforce housing for these people. It's absolutely disgraceful what's been allowed to happen with this building. You know, please vote no, or whatever your conscience tells you at this point now.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Further discussion under Article...yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jeff Gordon. I live at 167 North Gate Road, and all I really want to do is answer the previous speaker's question, which is, yes, we need two more bathrooms at that end of the street.
Thank you. Further discussion under Article 27. Yes, sir.
Ariane Hoganbaum. And is there any way to make this contingent on us getting the money from these people?
The gentleman's question is whether it's contingent to make it...whether it's possible to make it contingent on funding. I don't think legally it is, certainly not under the present article. I suppose it could be done, but not...would be a challenge. Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think in this particular situation, the way the grant has been proposed, we need to appropriate the full amount of money upfront so that we can enter into contracts and certify that funds are available. What'll happen then is the...a gift count will likely be established, and free cash will be reimbursed for the funds expended for each phase of the project. So I would suggest, yes, in order to allow us to go forward with the contracts, we will need the full appropriation, unencumbered upfront.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Further discussion under Article 27. Mr. Messina.
I'm cold. Hi, Frank Messina. I served on the Eldridge Garage Parking Committee about three years ago, three, four years ago. The committee was made up of a wide cross-section of the community: businesspeople, people in the chamber, other folks who had interest in town, including myself as chair of the Historical Commission, to see what we could do to maintain the historical integrity of the building. And I had pushed originally, you know, to try and save the building, but even myself, who has a long history of trying to save everything in this town, you know, agreed that the building is just unfortunately outlived its usefulness and can't be saved. But I would urge us, you know, to vote yes for this. The previous speaker talked about waiting through three years. Something happened in between called COVID, and, you know, a lot of things didn't happen the last couple of years. So I think it's great. I know this particular person who was offered to make a donation had come to us, to the committee, a few years ago and wanted to make that donation, but we asked him to allow us to continue to decide what was best for the community. And I think the design which is being presented here really presents something which could serve, you know, all the people in town, especially our visitors in the summer. I think it's worked quite well, and I hope you support the article.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. Further discussion under Article 27. Yes, sir.
David McAdam, 52 School Street in the Old Village. I hadn't planned to speak, but I feel I should. For three summers in the 1950s, I worked at Eldridge's Garage as pump boy, grease boy, car washer, et cetera, et cetera. I know the place intimately. It's been a sad, sad time over the last 50 years, watching the place go, but times change. First, I want to mention that there have always been bathrooms at that location, and at least the three summers that I was there, the public was welcome to use them. So we're good. One of the few traditions that are being continued at Eldridge's Garage is free public bathrooms. The other thing I...on the negative side, I have to register great disappointment in the fact that the original quote-unquote "design" of the structure is being so changed. The least we could do if we're building bathrooms there is build something that is more in keeping with the present architecture, which is kind of Chatham ramshackle. Instead of having something that looks like another Grecian temple bathroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McAdam. Chatham ramshackle will go down in Town Meeting history. Further discussion under Article 27. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a substantial majority. I'm sorry, sir, it was too late. Would it be appropriate to request our Board of Selectmen that they convey to the donor the thanks of Town Meeting? Thank you. We appreciate that. Article 28, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 64G to amend the local excise tax for transfer of occupancy of room, bed, breakfast, hotel, et cetera, set forth in this article. For a motion, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 64G, Section 3A, to amend the local excise rate for the transfer of occupancy of a room in a bed and breakfast establishment, hotel, lodging house, short-term rental, or motel located within the town from 4% to 6%, set increase to take effect January 1st, 2023, and further to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to authorize and establish special revenue funds into which 2% increase in the excise tax revenues shall be segregated respectively for attainable housing, 1%. Chatham Elementary School support, 1% purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Don.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee initially had reservations about this article as to the revenues derived from the tax increase were not at first, the revenues specifically between housing efforts and the cost of Chatham Elementary School. With this change, the Finance Committee fully supports this article.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Further discussion under Article 28. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. It is my understanding that there will be no motion made under Article 29. If there is none, we'll proceed to Article 30, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or transfer a sum of $50,000 in regard to feasibility study and evaluation of the former Chatham Health Swim Club on Crowell Road. For a motion, Mr. Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 for a feasibility study and evaluation of the Chatham Health Swim Club property located at 251 Crowell Road in order for the Select Board to have sufficient information to determine the costs and benefits if the town were to acquire the property.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Avalar.
The Finance Committee voted 6-1-0. I wonder how many affordable housing we can get out of that room.
Thank you, Ms. Avalar. Further discussion under Article 30. Ms. Frye.
Hi, Meredith Frye, Chair of Park and Rec Commission. I really want this study, I think, a pool for the town, and the community would benefit all generations. There would be many programs available for young and old, and I hope we vote to approve this feasibility study for the town.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Further discussion under Article 30. Yes, Ms. Tolly.
You want to come take this one?
Danielle Tolly. I served on the Chatham 365 Task Force, and I wanted to mention and remind folks that one of the Task Force's formal recommendations to the town to ensure and support a vibrant, thriving, year-round community was to explore a community pool. So this article directly supports one of the recommendations that have been made by that 365 Task Force, so I encourage you to support this article.
Thank you, Ms. Tolly. Further discussion, Ms. Patterson.
I think a pool for the town would be great. I have serious, serious reservations about spending our money to do a feasibility study on a building that's over 40 years old. There's no parking there. It's based on a hill, and I think that we should put a pool up on stepping stones near the high school. You know, you want everything for the children and for other people. We could design it the way we want to. It would be a much better area. It would be bigger, and I think it would just be better to build something new instead of trying to go in and refurbish this place that hasn't been used in years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Further discussion. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Roz Coleman from 600 Orleans Road. I want to call your attention to the fact that that pool was completely redone just before it had to close. So the interior, it's brand-new. The pool was completely refurbished. The other important thing for you to understand is that probably the reason it hasn't sold is that it is not ADA compliant. However, it abuts the property next door that Chatham owns. It abuts the DPW. So if that basic plot line were changed, you could have an excellent deep parking lot, and you could make it ADA-approved. Then you could sell it if you wanted to for probably a lot more than we'll have to pay for it. In terms of running it, there are lots of ways to run Chatham property. We could simply take care of the outside of it and find somebody who wants to take care of the inside of it. That's the way Chatham Marconi works. There are lots of ways for us to take that property and make it ADA-compliant. Probably we'll get it at a bargain price. I suggest that you vote for this.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Mr. Beistrum? Never mind, Mr. Beistrum. That's perfectly fine. Mr. Whitley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Whitley. I have to disagree with the previous speaker about the condition of this building. It is...it was not completely redone just prior to COVID. The work that was done in there was left to rot during COVID. So the previous speaker that mentioned that the building's 40-plus years old is correct. I can tell you right now, it's a waste of $50,000. It's not a salvageable building. If people are in support of a pool, I'm personally not, but if people are in support of a pool, there's a lot better ways to accomplish that than taking over this property or even studying this property. Waste of money.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. Further discussion under Article 30. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as offered by Mr. Nacastro say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
My opinion, the ayes have it. Let me show cards. Raise your card if you're in favor of Article 30, please. Thank you. And now, those who are opposed, the ayes have it, unless there's a request for a count. Articles...Article 30 is passed. Articles 31 through 35 were passed on the consent calendar, so we move on to Article 36, to see if the town will vote to use community preservation estimated revenues in the amount of $100,000 for housing purposes at the former Cape Cod Five property on West Road in Orleans. For a motion, Ms. Aikman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the community preservation estimated revenues in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 44B, Section 5, the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of funding the redevelopment of the former Cape Cod Five headquarters property in Orleans, Mass., as mixed-income housing, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Aikman. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Whelan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal involves converting the former Cape Cod Five headquarters in Orleans to mixed-income housing. It would provide 62 additional units of housing in the Lower Cape area. The Finance Committee believed this was favorable, and it voted seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan. Further discussion under Article 36. If there is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
So voted. Article 36 is passed. Articles 37 through 42 were passed on the consent calendar, which takes us to Article 43, a general bylaw amendment. For a motion under Article 43, Mr. Dykens.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend its general bylaws, Chapter 265 Waterways, as printed in the warrant for Article 43.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Whelan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee voted...excuse me, one second. What is it? It's a very lengthy article. We voted six in favor, zero opposed to this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan. Mr. Hosmer, there's an explanation in the warrant. If you would like to speak?
I'll speak two minutes.
One will be sufficient, Mr. Hosmer.
Good afternoon. Name is Dick Hosmer, Adams Lane, Chatham. Just wanted to update everyone on this. I won't read the whole thing, but we worked, starting actually in late 2018. COVID got in our way. The Select Board authorized engaging a law firm, which we worked with very closely, Amy Questle, attorney Amy Questle from KP Law. The whole approach took us...got us through 2019, and then we spent the rest of the time with COVID, dealing with that, and then we started again in August 2021. Basically, most of our...well, I can go through this. Well, many of the changes with housekeeping were simply to clarify and remove redundancy. There were a few topics that were the focus of our discussions. Preservation of existing commercial fishing moorings was a goal. Another effort was refining the existing local appeal process, which was inconsistent with formal state appeal process. In two other areas, we generated considerable discussion of the two-year rule and third-party mooring assignment sections of the bylaw. The committee felt strongly that these policies were appropriate and are being properly managed and should be preserved, and the committee feels this is an important document and realized that not all suggestions were incorporated. Nonetheless, the revisions proposed, combined with the new automated online mooring system, will make mooring renewal and assignment smoother and more transparent while maintaining important flexibility, given the complexities of harbor management in Chatham. The committee recognized that further revisions may be required in the future, and the committee stands ready to assist the Select Board and staff as needed. Thank you for attention. I urge support for the revisions as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Hosmer. Further discussion under Article 43. Mr. Carr.
West Chatham. It certainly worked. This is a question for perhaps Mr. Hosmer or the Harbor Master. Section 26514G, we've eliminated the publishing of how many moorings are kind of attributed to specific classes. I want to point out, I'm not interested in trying to challenge that we should try to maintain the mix. I just think for transparency, it's useful to have that kind of breakdown published, and I want to understand the logic behind not doing that.
Anyone care to respond to Mr. Hosmer? Mr. Hosmer, you're going to need to take the mic, or Mr. Smith, either one.
The reason we gave up on that is, as Mr. Hosmer alluded to, is we've adopted the online mooring system, which puts everything in the public view. You can go online and review how many moorings, who has moorings. So that's why we did that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Further discussion under Article 43. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously Article 44, general bylaw amendment in regard to unencapsulated foam, the blue stuff that we see. For a motion, Mr. Kokolas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend its general bylaws, Chapter 265 Waterways, as printed in the warrant for Article 44.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Sprague.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is for the preservation of our most treasured asset, our waterways. The Finance Committee voted unanimous approval, 6-0-0.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague. Ms. Nickerson, I recognize that you have done an extraordinary amount of work on this, and it's about to be passed unanimously. Do you feel that you need to share its history? Ms. Nickerson declines. Further discussion under...I'm sorry, Susanna. Further discussion under Article 44. If there is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Article 45, to see if the town will vote to amend its general bylaw further in regard to polystyrene and expanded polystyrene foam. For a motion, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend its general bylaw, Chapter 215, polystyrene and expanded polystyrene foam, as printed in the warrant for Article 45.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee unanimously supports Article 45, which, we believe, will lead to greater environmental protections for our coastal waters and embainments.
Thank you. Further discussion under Article 45. If there is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. In all sincerity, Ms. Nickerson, we all appreciate the educational endeavors you and your colleagues have taken on over the last several years. Article 46, to see if the town will vote to adopt a proposed amendment in regard to the charter, changing the time for charter review. For a motion, Mr. Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend its home rule charter as printed in the warrant for Article 46.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Sprague.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee voted unanimously in favor of this article, 6-0-0.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague. Mr. Carr, for a brief explanation, changing the time.
This is...this simply makes it obvious when it is that we're going to have a charter review, and it extends the time out, so it's more consistent with really the state of the charter. At this point, we've had it for several years, or a couple of decades, and we've been through several revisions, and in our work, we did not find a lot that needed to be changed. It seems like...I want to point out, this simply states the maximum time that could go without a review. There are other triggers. If something changes in the town and the charter needs to be reviewed, the charter review can be triggered before this time.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Moderator, those few hearty souls who remain here, I move to amend the immediate article by adding the language that the 10-year committee shall be elected and not appointed. The original charter committees that allowed the creation of the charter were elected citizens. They were not selectively appointed to adopt a particular political view or persuasion, and I think if every 10 years we're going to view or persuasion, and I think if every ten years we're going to reflect on how our charter and town is run, we ought to ask our citizens to step up and run for election, get their fifty signatures, show how much they really care, and sit down and not be influenced by the political winds of the time, but to have a real, honest, and transparent discussion about what may or may not be in the interest of our citizens at that future date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I appreciate that. Without opining on the merits, I find that a proposal to create an elected charter review committee to be beyond the scope of Article forty-six, which deals only with the periodic review of the charter, it would be something that could be done at a future town meeting. But under this article, I find it to be beyond the scope. Further discussion under Article forty-six. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. Article forty-seven, to see if the town vote to authorize the Select Board petition in jury and general court for special legislation in regard to a housing trust. For a motion, Mr. Kukulas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to reaffirm support for the special legislation seeking the creation of the Chatham Housing Trust for both affordable up to one-hundred percent average median income and attainable housing up to two-hundred percent average median income, as described in the Article forty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Kukulas. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Dome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One of the recommendations of the Finance Committee's Community Housing Working Group was to create a housing trust that would allow for projects benefiting those making up to two-hundred percent area median income. We strongly and unanimously support Article forty-seven, which would refile our petition to the General Court to establish a trust that will better serve the needs of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Dome. Further discussion under Article forty-seven. Ms. Freeman?
Ms. Freeman. Thank you. I'm Gloria Freeman. This article number forty-seven, which begins on page seventy-two, was approved at the annual town meeting 2021, but perhaps it was fortuitous that the state legislature did not act on it before the end of their session, and that we now have an opportunity to revote on whether it is in the town's best interest. Have you read this article, all five pages? Please read it before you vote. It's all about process, and the process removes our Select Board and town meeting. It replaces management of the trust from five Select Board members to only two. I have felt good that all five of our elected officials have been members representing all of us. I believe that our elected Select Board, if not town meeting, should have final authority, and with all five members that would occur. While we've been told there will be public hearings to allow townspeople to provide their recommendations, we know that many times citizen recommendations are listened to but not heard. Article forty-seven asks to create one housing trust for both affordable and attainable housing, and would remove and replace the existing affordable housing trust. The differences are dramatic in the specificity that's provided. The proposed document is nowhere near as transparent or detailed as the existing one, because, as proposed, all the decisions are left to the trustees. That's why you should read it. I'm voting no on this article because I believe that it is not specific enough, nor protective enough, nor transparent, and that our full Select Board should be making important decisions about our town. Our money is supporting most of these endeavors, so all citizens, maybe even town meeting, which is the legislative body, should have a voice in how that money is spent, and a voice on critical issues such as the impact on our water supply, infrastructure, and the environment. Such decisions should not be made by an autonomous entity with no responsibility to the public. I hope that you will vote no, and thank you for letting me bring this to your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Further discussion of Article forty-seven. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Thompson, excuse me.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am respectfully voting no on Article forty-seven. I am in favor of affordable housing, but not this open-ended document that gives over to five unelected people the power to buy, sell, hire, pay advisors, agents, accountants, appraisers, design and housing development professionals, and lawyers, and the power to ask the town to borrow money at town meeting whenever all the trust funds have been expended. This proposal has been advertised by housing representatives as open to charter citizens for valuable input and suggestions. This article as written leaves ninety percent of Chatham citizenry completely in the dark, with no say whatsoever. It allows millions of dollars to be expended without a town meeting vote. Once our tax dollar passes into the trust, we lose our voice and our right to vote. Only two members of the town elected Select Board would be privy to trust meetings, which means they can be permanently outvoted. Our town is based on the home rule system. This article detours around all our rights, even our property rights. A second town meeting is being discussed for the fall. All we are asking for is a revised version of this document that includes more transparency and requires town meeting vote for decisions relating to large expenditures of our tax revenue dedicated to the trust, and opportunities for citizens to weigh in on design, location, and hiring of independent contractors and agents.
Time, Ms. Thompson.
I am sure a new revised trust document could easily be made, ready by fall. That will give our town more time to focus on our number-one challenge, cleaning up our potable water.
Time, Ms. Thompson.
Getting your wells back in action. Thank you. I've started up.
Mr. Daniel, then Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think just for a bit of context, one of the original recommendations of the working group that Tommy Dome had referenced, the Finance Committee set up a working group two and a half years ago to study and really dig into the issue of affordable and attainable housing in town. We had hearings for seven months, eight months, and presented, I think, a seventeen or eighteen-page report of recommendations to the Select Board. One of them included the creation of a second, newer trust. The problem... The model that we currently have, which is a five-select-person model, is referred to now in Massachusetts as the old model. The new model is something that has rather two members of the Select Board and three, sometimes five, members of the broader community, typically reflecting people you would want engaged in that kind of things. Could be an engineer, could be an architect, could be a builder, that kind of thing. There are many towns in the Cape that have adopted the new model, and I think part of the intent of this bylaw was to get us into a position where we could act. The problem of having five select men and women being responsible for housing in addition to approving everything for the witch's walk is what we've seen, is that we don't make progress, and that's why communities around the state and the Cape have moved to the new model with lower representation from the board of the Select Board. I can defer to Katie or to Jill as to whether town meeting gets involved in voting on these things. I suspect they will, but I just want to provide a little bit of context and background for the thinking behind that change.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, town meeting. This is refile of legislation that you voted to approve last year. This is, as the Chair of Finance Committee has said, this is giving us a little more flexibility. If you were here listening to anything that was said today, the frustration around moving projects forward for affordable or attainable housing in Chatham has been excruciatingly slow. When the Board of Selectmen started to discuss housing issues back in... When I started on the board, I think around 2018, we started to frame up what we wanted to do, and part of that framework was to work towards building a trust, a trust that could work with more flexibility. So I encourage you to vote to approve this project.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Burks?
Yes. My understanding, this was passed by a previous town meeting.
Correct.
It was quite well-attended. If I remember, there was a lively debate about it, and went back and forth, and we eventually took a vote on it. So now simply being refiled, I think we're sort of breaking faith with the previous town meeting, since there's different people here, fewer people, that we should not follow Supreme Court and break precedent, decide that we're going to change our mind, you know? I think we should go with the previous vote, I mean, without even discussing the merits of it. I just feel that we had a previous vote, it was well-attended. The citizens then decided to go along with this. For some reason or another, it did not get the session of the House. I think we should refile it and accept this article. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burks. Further discussion under Article forty-seven. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is offered by Mr. Kukulas, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. My opinion and the ayes have it by a very substantial majority. Article forty-eight, to see if the town will refile another... Sorry, I don't know if someone was speaking my attention or just the wind. Article forty-eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to refile legislation in regard to a real property transfer fee. For a motion, Mr. Dykens.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to reaffirm support for the special legislation to impose a fee equal to one-half percent on the purchase price paid upon the transfer of any interest in real property situated in the town of Chatham for consideration of two million dollars, two million dollars or more, as specified in Article forty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Avalar.
After much discussion, the Finance Committee voted five in favor and one against.
Thank you, Ms. Avalar. Further discussion under Article forty-eight. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I guess I petition the town meeting to reconsider this ill-advised means of financing activities in our town. When the measure was being deliberated, I believe at the Select Board meeting, I believe the then-chair of the Select Board passed an opinion on a real estate transaction in town, calling it obscene. Now, for a public official to use public forum to condemn a private transaction between a willing buyer and a willing seller, I think is unfortunate. It was also reported, when this was under deliberation, that would be about forty-seven transactions affected. So this sort of fundraising scheme is a politician's dream. We find a sufficiently small minority, we label their legal activities as obscene, and we get the townspeople to respond to their feelings of resentment and envy, and pass a tax only on those individuals to punish them. We should not be financing our town and its activities in this fashion. So I encourage all of you to think about better ways to finance things with broadly-applied taxes, so that we all have skin in the game, and we'll all be motivated to see that the funds are spent prudently and wisely. Please reconsider your vote here.
Thank you. Ms. Tolly.
My understanding is this article is exactly as the previous article, in that this was approved at last year's town meeting. So in keeping with precedent, as previously noted, I encourage us all to, without further debate, uphold the vote of last year's town meeting and approve this article.
Thank you, Ms. Tolly. Further discussion under Article forty-eight. Yes, sir.
Yes, Ariane Hogan-Bone.
Any way to index this, because in a few years, two million dollars is going to be attainable housing.
Perhaps by the end of this town meeting.
No, because even like, you know, the different things, if they're not indexed, time catches up.
Mr. Dykens, care to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and yes, it can be indexed and it can be revisited via vote of town meeting. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Further discussion. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is offered by Mr. Dykens, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
So voted by a very substantial majority. Articles forty-nine and fifty were passed on the consent calendar, which moves us to Article fifty-one, to see if the town will vote to amend its protective bylaw in regard to affordable dwelling units. For a motion, Mr. Spruch, on behalf of Ms. Halpern, and if... There he is, the vice-chair of the Planning Board.
I move that the town vote to amend the protective zoning bylaw as printed in the warrant for Article fifty-one.
Thank you very much. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Several years ago, Chatham changed its protective bylaw to allow the construction of ADUs. It was hoped that the number of ADUs would be built to increase the number of rental units in the town. Very few have been built. This article further modifies that protective bylaw to make it easier to license and build an ADU. Finance Committee voted in favor, seven for and none against.
Thank you very much. I will steal your thunder and read the Planning Board's report, the duly posted and noted public hearing held by the Chatham Planning Board on March seven, 2022. The Board voted unanimously to accept and to recommend Section seven B nineteen ADU zoning bylaw amendment, as appears in this article in the warrant. Further discussion under Article fifty-one. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. So voted unanimously Article fifty-two, also a zoning bylaw... Oh, sorry, that was on the consent calendar. That moves us to fifty-three, was on the consent calendar, and thus fifty-four, a zoning bylaw amendment in regard to historic preservation incentives. For a motion... Turn to the right page. Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I apologize for standing behind you, but I'm cold. I move that the town vote to amend its protective zoning bylaws as printed in the warrant for Article fifty-four, and amended... This is an amendment to the article as written, and was recommended that I read it, so we just take one vote on that amendment. If you look at your bylaw as it's printed, the last section is called "Termination of Special Right Upon Loss/Destruction of Building," and we would like to replace the current wording with the wording I'm about to give you. This wording was a recommendation by members of the ZBA after the article was printed. "In the event of damage to, loss, or full demolition of the historic structure, such that the historic structure cannot be restored to its prior condition and use, the light coverage incentive or setback festability incentives special permit granted under this bylaw shall expire, and the owner shall therefore remain... Therefore maintain the subject property in compliance with the applicable building coverage and setback requirements for the under- for the underlying districts, as specified in the Chatham Protective Zoning Bylaw, unless the ZBA issues a new special permit reauthorizing the previously granted building coverage and setback waivers with respect to a new building or structure proposed for the subject property, period. To grant such a special permit, the ZBA must find that the proposed replacement building slash structure will not be detrimental to or inconsistent with the established character of the neighborhood and will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, period. The ZBA shall make written findings confirming compliance with this. This is a situation where it had a simple paragraph of four or five lines, and we turned it over to the attorney. So effectively, I shouldn't kid around about this, what effectively this does is ensure that if an historic property, which is granted the special permit and the waivers in order to protect that particular historic property, if it is in fact lost by fire or complete destruction, that it does protect the individual owner, that he has a way for the structure to be rebuilt. Mr. Costello, is that correct? Thank you. He said yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I have a very long-winded presentation on this, but I'm going to shorten it and keep it down.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you, and I'll read the necessary planning report. Report had a duly posted and noted public hearing held by the Chatham Planning Board on March 7, 2022. The board voted unanimously to accept and to recommend Section 7B-20 Historic Preservation Incentives Dimensional Requirements and to amend appendix two, schedule of dimensional requirements on the bylaw amendment, as it appears in this article in the warrant. Further discussion under Article fifty-four. Mr. Messina has moved that the town vote to adopt the bylaw as printed in the warrant, accept that, at the end, the language which he read to termination of special permit rights shall prevail over the printed language. This is an accommodation to, it's a compromise, a joint decision or recommendation of several boards. Further discussion under Article fifty-four. This requires a two-thirds vote. There is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. So voted unanimously, Article fifty-five, to see if the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or take by eminent domain some land over to my left for a motion. Mr. Farber.
Good afternoon. My name is Peter Farber, and with me is my wife, Kim. We are the sponsors of Article fifty-five, and therefore I move to see, for the town to authorize the board, the select board, to acquire by purchase, gift, or take by eminent domain the fee in two adjoining parcels of land with the improvements therein. The first parcel is located at 776 Main Street in Chatham, and is shown on Assessors Map fourteen E as parcel thirty-seven dash fifty-six one. This parcel contains 3.308 acres, more or less, and is shown on Land Court Plan 23280-a, and described in certificate of title number 220473.
I forgot.
The second parcel is located at 70 Depot Road, Chatham, and is shown on Assessors Map fourteen E as parcel fifty-nine dash fifty-one. This parcel contains 16,534 square feet, more or less, and is described in a deed recorded in Book 32279, page 136. Said acquisitions shall be for the general municipal purposes, including without limitation, active and passive recreation, historic preservation, community services, education, advancement of the visual and performing arts, and all manner of related activities, and to raise and appropriate, appropriate transfer from available funds and/or borrow a sum of money to fund the foregoing acquisitions and the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. And further, to authorize the select board and/or its designee to apply for, accept, and expend any funds obtained through state or federal grants, gifts, loans, or other public or private funds that may be available for the foregoing purposes, and to take any and all actions and execute any and all documents necessary or convenient to accomplish the foregoing purposes, or to take any other action relative thereto. The most important word, authorize. We're not directing the select board to take the land to my left. We're not, we're only authorizing the select board to consider the acquisition.
Mr. Farber?
Can I hold you for a minute? Yes, is it disembodied voice here? Bill?
I'm sorry.
Bill? Mr. Litchfield had to step down because he has had a previous relationship in his practice with someone who has an interest in his property. So I am, you're stuck with me for this article. So before I let you continue, I'm going to ask for the Finance Committee recommendation on the article, and I think we're getting that from Mr. Doan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee was unanimous in its belief that seeking to gain control of the Montemoi Theater property by purchase or by an ascitation of eminent domain was not in the best interest of our community at this time.
Okay, you're free to continue.
All right, I'm sorry, I forgot. So as I was saying, it's an authorization. Only the select board can, of course, take land by eminent domain. The question is, is this something that the town is interested in, this parcel of land next door? And I would remind the town of a few other acquisitions in the past. The land that we're sitting on, or standing on right now, was acquired by the town in 1925 by purchase. Nobody would ever regret that purchase. Kate Gould Park, eastern end of town, was acquired by gift in the early 1930s. I don't think anyone would ever question that move either, although there was a town meeting where it did not pass, but it passed the second time. Acquiring land for public uses, in this case, a public park, but a special kind of park, because there is a theater on the property that's been in use for more than 50 years, is a very special acquisition, and is one that we should not pass over without a great deal of thought. Because once the town acquires a parcel of land, it's the town's forever. It's for us, it's for our children, our grandchildren, and on and on ad infinitum. The cost of the land is presently assessed at $2.5 million. The assessment will probably go up for the fiscal year that begins July 1st. But even if it went up by a million dollars, it's still worth it. And why is it worth it? As I said before, it's because we have it forever, and our great-great-great-grandchildren, of course, will not have to spend a dime. It's theirs forever. So what I would suggest, that we purchase, we authorize to get this land now. Are we worried about eminent domain? There was a golf course taking many years ago that went way over what we expected to pay.
Mr. Farber, we, I'll let you continue, but we are, we have restricted previous speakers to a limited amount, so you have to respect.
Okay. I'll make just a couple of other points, and then I'll sit down. The cost, of course, is spread over the entire tax base. Those of us sitting here today will pay very little, because there's many, many non-residents who will pay. The timing is perfect, because the present owner has started the permitting process but has failed in its initial attempt. Now is the time to make the decision to purchase. With that, I will thank you for your time, and I encourage you to vote yes on the article.
Any further comment? I see, Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Mr. Intra-Moderator. With all due respect to the petitioner, this is a little bit weird. The current owner of the property, I think he paid about $4 or $5 million, so I don't know about the assessment, and that was about four years ago, five years ago. God knows what it cost. My house, which I paid $150,000 for about 15 years ago, is now worth 1.3 million. So God knows what it's going to cost to purchase and/or eminent domain. Secondly, the current owner of the property, Alexandria Properties, is pretty far along relative to the development of the housing, unfortunately, housing at that site, and I guess we can blame ourselves for that, because we turned him down at the previous town meeting when he wanted to provide an alternate to that. On top of that, the theater design is proceeding. It's not going to be the Montemoi Theater we all know and love for 50 years, where those students from Hart University and other universities. It's going to be a different kind of theater. But it will be a theater, and it will be called Montemoi Theater. In addition, myself as Chair of the Historical Commission is working with the owner, Greg Clark, in order to obtain the necessary national register designation of that property to allow him to get the necessary tax credits to proceed. So, again, with all due respect to the petitioner, I want to go home. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Janet Whitmore, and I live at 727 Main Street, and I've been present at a number of the meetings, and actually serve as an alternate on one of the meetings. But not to go against what Mr. Messina said, it wasn't, he paid around 3.2 for this property, and the zoning board completely shut him down the last meeting, and so he won't be able to proceed with the big mansions that he wants to put there. I just think that this land would be better served for community use. Unfortunately, the town didn't get to weigh in on this, because it was a private transaction. The people who originally owned the property were disheartened because the town came down on them and said, you know, you need to do something about the living quarters, because they're not, they're not safe, and they were despondent, and sold it at a private sale. So I think if the town had had an opportunity to purchase this land, they would have done so. I would like to see this land preserved for the community and not for oversized mansions that don't serve us environmentally and for the community. Thank you.
Another speaker here?
Yes, Elaine Gibbs. I'll make it quick. The property's not for sale. It was on the open market. I know that the town, we had many opportunities to buy it, and we did not. And the idea that we would even consider, as a town, to take property away from somebody under eminent domain is terrifying. That is not who we are. It is private property. I was opposed to what's going on, but we had our chance. And to do anything otherwise is totally inappropriate. I would hope everyone would agree. Thank you.
Any further discussion under Article fifty-five?
Mr. Moderator, sorry, just to clarify, because of previous speaker references, the current owner of the property has submitted a subdivision plan for this portion in the back of the property, and that was approved by the planning board, because they had to approve it, basically. They came to the Zoning Board of Appeals with the proposal to put a house on a lot, on one of the lots, that created a four-lot subdivision, over here, just behind the scoreboard. And that came to the Zoning Board of Appeals, because we, I'm a member, of which I'm a member, so that's why I know this history. We have the ability to grant special permits for residential use in a business zone. This property is business-owned. We, he allowed him to withdraw the proposal that he had made, because it took a straw pole and was unanimously, would have been unanimously rejected. So we had some issues about giving a special permit for residential use on this portion of the property, and so that's where we stand with him right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I see anyone else who wish to comment on Article fifty-five? Hearing none, we will now take a vote on Article fifty-five. This requires a two-third majority. Everyone who is in favor of Article fifty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone who's opposed?
No.
No.
In my estimation, the noes have it. Anybody object to that? In that case, I'll turn this mic over to someone who knows what they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Bergstrom, and I apologize to the meeting for forgetting when I was supposed to step down and having, doing it so inelegantly. I will simply relate to you that I do not and did not represent the owner of the property, but I did appear at the Zoning Board of Appeals in regard to, on behalf of another entity, which was not enamored of that proposal, which is why I didn't have a legal conflict, but I certainly had a moral one. That moves us along to Article fifty-eight, I believe, because fifty-six and fifty-seven have been addressed previously. I understand there will be no motion under Article fifty-eight, and that takes us, which had to do with the swim club, that takes us to Article fifty-nine, a citizen's petition in regard to a residential property tax exemption for a motion. Mr. Taylor.
I guess it's appropriate to say good evening. I'm Seth Taylor, Taylor Lane, Chatham. Mr. Moderator, and members of the select board, the Finance Committee, and most importantly, those of us meeting here today, our town's legislative body, the voters of Chatham, good afternoon or good evening. I rise to introduce Article fifty-nine, which is a citizen's petition item. If you, the voters, approve the article by a majority vote, it will be sent to the Massachusetts State Legislature, which will be advanced as a special act of the legislature, with the intent that it becomes state law, applicable only to the town of Chatham. Please note, and I ask you to read along in your warrant, if you would, there is a printing error in the warrant, so please attend to what I say as I introduce the article you're going to be voting on. My reading will be the correct version of what is being voted on, and it will include correction of the error. I move that by the authority granted to the Chatham Town Meeting by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts pursuant to Home Rule Amendment, Section eight, Pairs one, now then, the town of Chatham, here and after the town, through an affirmative majority vote at town meeting, asks the Massachusetts General Court to enact a special act of the legislature which shall incorporate Massachusetts General Law Title IX, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five C, parenthetically, here and after the residential exemption, as the foundation of the special act, excuse me, as the foundation for the special act, which shall also include the following enumerated provisions as amendments to the so-called residential exemption. residential exemption. Paragraph A, or the First Amendment, non-residents of the town who own Class 1 property in the town shall be entitled to claim the residential exemption for one Class 1 property, provided that, one, the property is leased for a minimum term of one year; two, the individual or individuals to whom the property is leased shall inhabit the property as their lawful residents of record; three, the property shall not be subleased or otherwise made available for occupation by other than the leaseholder and/or his immediate dependent family members. Paragraph B, or Amendment 2, lawful residents of the town who qualify for the residential exemption in consideration of being lawfully domiciled in a Class 1 property in town and who avail themselves of the exemption shall be granted a second residential exemption for one additional Class 1 property that they own in Chatham, provided that, one, the individual or individuals to whom the property is leased shall inhabit the property as their lawful residents. The property is leased for a minimum of one year; two, the individual or individuals to whom the property is leased shall inhabit the property as their lawful residents of record; and three, the property shall not be subleased or otherwise made available for occupation by other than the leaseholder and/or the immediate dependent family of the members. So, the three conditions for both resident and non-resident, in order for them to get additional exemptions in the case of residence, or in order to gain an exemption in the case of being a non-resident, are all conditioned equally that it's a long-term lease that will be inhabited by the leaseholder and nobody else, and it won't be sublet protections. And finishing up, the Massachusetts Legislature and all representatives of town, as well as the voters at town meeting, shall take such other action as may be required in order to advance, enact, and implement the referenced special act, which shall become law upon final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
And now, brief explanation, and I will try to make it quite quick. The proposed article that I've just read to you is intended to help increase the number of year-round rental properties in Chatham, while at the same time, helping to make it more affordable for Chatham's resident population to sustain itself. I believe that it will also provide some relief to future generations during the difficulties that arise upon generational transfer of family real assets. There are rarely guarantees in life, but I can promise you one thing about this article. If it passes, it will reduce the tax burden of every resident whose home has an appraised value of approximately two point seven, approximately two point seven million dollars or less. There are approximately seventy-four hundred Class 1 properties in Chatham, and approximately three thousand of those are occupied by residents. There are believed to be somewhere between thirty-two hundred and thirty-eight hundred short-term rentals in town. If only five percent of those short-term rentals become long-term rentals, there will be an additional one hundred and sixty more rentals available for year-round residents. I would also note that there are approximately five hundred and fifty Class 1 properties that have an appraised value that exceeds the two point seven million dollar value, representing only seven point five percent of all residential properties in town, meaning that only seven point five percent of the valued properties in town, if they were occupied by residents, and I'm not certain how many of our residents live in a property with higher than two point seven million dollar valuation, but if you are one of those residents that's fortunate enough to live in a property that's greater than two point seven million dollars, you will pay more taxes.
Getting close, Mr. Taylor.
All right. Members of the Finance Board have repeatedly voted against a residential exemption via town. They've stated that such an exemption is unfair. I'm reminded of my mother explaining to me that life isn't fair. What's fair about a property owner making sure that they don't exceed the maximum days allowed in their second home in Chatham, just so they can claim the residential exemption in other state or city, like South Carolina, Florida, or Boston? What's fair about investors coming to town and escalating the price of real estate in order to add property?
Time, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Moderator, I was looking at my watch, and I think you included my-
Mr. Taylor, don't doubt me, sir.
You included-
Sit down, Mr. Taylor.
You included my reading of the-
No, I did not, sir. I did not, sir. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Whalen.
While the Finance Committee believes that the intent of this article is desirable, there are also some inequities involved. The Finance Committee felt administration of this potential arrangement would involve a great deal of labor and potential litigation. The Finance Committee voted none in favor, six opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Further discussion, Mr. Rotner and then Ms. Avalar.
Thank you. My name is Joel, my name is Joel Rotner. I'm a member of the Summer Residence Advisory Committee, formerly the chairman of the committee. I just want to say that the Summer Residence Advisory Committee voted unanimously to oppose this. And that's not because it will increase our taxes, not at all. It's very important to recognize that the Summer Residence Committee and your summer residents love this town. We support this town, and we have supported this town with our money as a former, as come up a couple times in this meeting, by private citizens donating, and as a former speaker said, we were going to pay you for most of, for, not most, but for the greater share of, most of what goes on in this town. We have supported many expensive, if not all, town projects which benefit the town, going way back to the sewers, the schools for which we do not have any children participating, the community center, and we actively work and provide whatever expertise we can provide to promote those projects, including affordable housing. If you look at our website, you'll find a proposal for affordable housing at the property, I don't know the name, over on Main Street by the, near Route 37 that we acquired last year. It's two and a half acres, and you'll find a proposal for twenty-five houses, affordable two, three, and four-bedroom houses, all laid out on our website, which we have submitted to the town, that can be produced. We're happy to pay for those projects. We're happy to, to support the money that goes there. This proposal does none of that. If you think that a six hundred dollar average saving on someone's tax bill, and this is the Finance Committee addressed the same thing at their meeting, is going to promote rental on a long term, when you can get thousands of dollars a week for renting during the summer, that's just not going to happen. And it's not revenue neutral. It's been sold as being revenue neutral. It's not. There's a cost of implementing this, which the Finance Committee addressed at their meeting, and there's also the cost of lost revenue from short-term rentals. So, it's not-
Getting close, Mr. Rotner.
So, the Summer Residence Advisory Committee urges you to vote this recommendation down. And in fact, we consider it an affront to the summer residents. Thank you.
Ms. Avalar, then, Mrs. Taylor, Ms. Avalar.
I think that this proposal is an abomination. How much are we going to grab from people who are supporting us already? Without the revenue from the tax bills of people who do not live here, we could not live the way we do. Other people are already paying our taxes. How much more do you think they can stand? You know, it's a wonderful town. I've lived here, well, not all my life, but all my life so far. And you don't have to come here, you know, if you find a better place. And if you find a place that treats you more fairly, go. This is an abomination.
Thank you.
We just want everything we can from other people, and it is not fair. We are punishing people for being successful. I hope you turn this abomination down.
Thank you, Ms. Avalar. Ms. Taylor?
Um, sorry. Back up. I would like you to state, or the Select Board to state their vote, because it's not listed in the warrant and it got passed over. And, and secondly, I would, you know, this isn't about us and them, all right? We're not talking, just like when we add on cost to our tax bill to support an elementary school, we're to put in extra wells for all that extra water that's needed during the summer. We're talking about a slight shift. And for the people that need the relief most in this town, there is a significant benefit. For the majority of us sitting in the seats right now, there's not going to be a lot of change for the majority, and even for the majority of the summer residents. But for those that struggle to make ends meet, it's going to be an additional benefit to them to help pay for that childcare, because what we hand out isn't enough. We're talking about the lowest economic class here. That's what we're trying to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Mr. Deikens, character.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And, you know, in kind of a turnabout, this issue has been in front of the board since I've been on the board, probably three or four times. And this time around, I listened more carefully. I've always agreed that bifurcating the, the tax rate was not a good idea, that it was unfair, that, that it, that, you know, it really kind of would, would provide a schism between residents and non-residents. But having heard the Chatham 365 Task Force, having heard the Economic Development Committee that has come in two or three or four times and asked us to revisit this issue, when Mr. Taylor came and, and, and came in with a little twist on this as well, thinking that if we, if we allowed non-residential folks to be able to rent their place year round, it would provide extra housing in Chatham. And our number-one issue in Chatham right now is affordable housing. So, if we could get more capacity in housing, I thought maybe it was worth a try. So, a guy by the name Norman Jones told me one time, nothing ventured, nothing gained. Now, this is totally a hundred and eighty degrees from what we've said before, and Joel, Joel knows this, and the Summer Resident Advisory Committee knows this. But if we listen carefully to, to our, our residents that are struggling, this would be meaningful relief for those residents, not for all of us necessarily sitting here, but it would be meaningful relief for our residents. This may not pass tonight. It may not get to Boston.
Time, Mr. Deikens.
It may not get to Boston, but I, I plan on revisiting the issue later on this year when we look at the tax rate, because I think there's some inequality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Bill Bogart is South Chatham, Mass. I think this proposal is a pig with lipstick on it. The idea is to create a residential property tax exemption. That exemption will mean extra taxes for the non-residents, which we've always said. I think the additional proposal, the lipstick, I'm sorry, I think the additional proposal, the lipstick, as I call it, is a worthy one. And if it's a worthy one, why not make that a separate petition, independent of giving a tax break to all the residents? The hope is that maybe a hundred and twenty, I believe, property will be turned into year-round rental, while giving a tax break to thirty-two hundred property members who do nothing. I also support the idea that of people with economic needs, then perhaps it should be a plan by the Finance Committee, or whomever would be appropriate, for people to apply for residential tax exemption based upon the income and need. I vote you to vote down this proposal, and yes, I would support a proposal to make the year-round housing as listed as a future amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bogart. Mr. Kokolas, and then probably ready to vote. Mr. Kokolas?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to answer Mrs. Taylor's request, the vote for the Select Board was five zero four.
Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Bates.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Luther Bates, EDC. This article is another part of the package of solutions to address our housing crisis. It's endorsed by the Chatham 365 Committee. It's endorsed by Economic Development Committee. The residential tax exemption provides two things, affordability to local Chatham residents, and more importantly, it provides an incentive for owners to provide desperately needed year-round rentals, and this is the fundamental goal. The EDC conducted an analysis, which I'll share in part. Consider two neighbors, A and B. One is a year-round resident, one is a non-resident, second homeowner. Five hundred thousand dollars is the assessed value of both houses. Let's talk about fair. The value of the savings for the exemption for the resident is eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. The cost to the non-resident is two hundred and twenty-five dollars. This seeming disparity is the result of leveraging a broad non-resident tax base. We recognize this added cost of the second homeowners, and, yes, the Chatham residents owning a house assessed above two point six million. However, with the increased water infrastructure costs and knowing that the new tax rate is still going to be one of the lowest, if not the lowest, in the state, we believe that the extra cost represents an investment in our community, commerce, and character of our town. The EDC supports this article six zero with one amendment as written.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Further discussion under Article 59.
Now, Mr. Moderator, excuse me for a moment. I'd like to propose an amendment.
Okay, Mr. Bates would like to offer an amendment.
Okay, I would like to propose an amendment to the article that we've just discussed that we support, the EDC. I would like to, to propose an amendment to avoid an unintended consequence that could unnecessarily reduce the year-round rental incentive. I personally provide three year-round rentals in Chatham.
Mr. Bates, please offer the amendment. You've already spoken for more than two minutes.
Sorry. Pardon me, sir. I'd like to amend Section B, line three, to strike the word "second" and change the word "one" to the word "each." This would allow Chatham residents to be granted a residential exemption for each property, Class 1 property.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Mr. Bates moves that the, moves to amend Section B in the third line by striking the word "second" and changing the word "one" in the next line to "each," so it will read, shall be granted a residential exemption for each additional Class 1 property. Discussion of the amendment. Not with the matter of the amendment only to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Show of cards quickly, please. All in favor of the amendment only? Thank you. And now, those opposed? Believe the noes have it, unless there's a request for a count. We will now proceed, the amendment is not adopted. We will now proceed, unless there is further discussion, we'll vote on Article 59. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Show of cards, please. Raise your card if you're in favor. Thank you. And if you're opposed, the noes have it, is there a request for a count? There is no request for a count. Article 59 does not prevail Article 60. I am told there will be no motion, because you already acted on 62 and 63. The last article before us is Article 61. I expect that after we conclude with Article 61, you will be out of here. But before you do, and I know his colleagues are going to say something on a Tuesday Selectman's meeting, but I want to, on behalf of town meeting, extend our thanks to the retiring Mr. Kokolas for his services. Thank you, Peter. Article 61, to see if the town vote to authorize reuse of property at 127 Old Harbor Road, the former Marion Ellis property to the, over there. For a motion, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to change the purpose for which a portion of the real property identified as 127 Old Harbor Road, Chatham's Assessor's Parcel 14E dash zero, dash zero dash forty, as more particularly identified and shown on the plan and sketch submitted with this article containing- with this article containing 41,817 plus or minus square feet, more or less, is dedicated to the purpose of developing affordable and/or attainable housing upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board shall deem to be in the interest of the town, and further, to authorize the Select Board to transfer, convey such interests in said property, to prepare and execute such agreements, deeds, and other instruments, and to undertake such other actions as may be necessary to implement the revised use of said real property.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Finance Committee, your recommendation, Ms. Avalar.
I was not paying attention. The Finance Committee? You have to wait, I have to get my glasses.
Oh, I apologize, it's not Ms. Avalar, it's Ms. Madison, my error.
Thanks anyway, Mr. Moderator. Uh, the Finance Committee overwhelmingly supports the reuse of the structures at 127 Old Harbor Road, believing it can be an additive solution to the efforts Chatham is making or trying to make to address its attainable and affordable housing crisis.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Further discussion under Article 61. Uh, we see several people approaching, a gentleman coming, yes, sir, you. And you can, if you want to speak, come down toward the mic, because there's quite a few of you apparently. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm David Mott. I live on Ocean View Terrace. And while I don't have any objection to affordable housing, I do believe that the town, in accepting the bequest, had a moral obligation to fulfill the, uh, that bequest. And for 50 years, they've done nothing about it, and now, all of a sudden, we want to repurpose it. I think if you want to motivate people to leave further bequests, I think they have to do so with some sense of obligation that the town will proceed with what they would like to accomplish. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Was, uh, Mott. Brevity is appreciated. Mr. West. Mr. West is a non-voter. By unanimous consent, may he speak? He may. Miss, oh, there is objection, uh, Mr. West, I will ask the meeting, because that's our next step. All those in favor of allowing Mr. West to speak say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Mr. West, two minutes, or one and a half will be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, everyone, I'm Steve West, and I live at 124 Old Harbor Road. Uh, it's across the street from the property that's being discussed in this article. Well, there's several reasons to oppose this article. My comments will only address what I think is the primary reason this article should be defeated. And that is, the article goes against the wishes of the donor, which is what the previous speaker said. Chatham has historically done very well in honoring donor wishes, so it's a shame that this isn't the case in this instance, as Ms. Ellis's wishes for her property will largely be ignored and disregarded if this article passes. Since Ms. Ellis didn't have any heirs to speak on her behalf, I'd like to provide a bit of background that I hope you'll consider before voting on this article. Our family has lived at 124 Old Harbor Road since 1946. My grandfather, Ed Harrington, was a good friend of Ms. Ellis. In 1968, in his capacity as a selectman, my grandfather convinced Ms. Ellis to donate her home and land to be used for the benefit of the elementary school. Ms. Ellis was very specific in her will, and as stated in the article explanation, the whole property was to be designated as the Augustus and Marion Ellis Playground, and no buildings, except those on this property at her demise, are to be allowed. Yet here we are today, being asked to section off more than half of Ms. Ellis's property for use in another capacity, a capacity not in keeping with her wishes. My grandfather was very proud to have obtained this property for the town, which was specifically left for the benefit of the elementary school and Chatham's children. Repurposing this property now goes against Mrs. Ellis's wishes, and also sets a bad precedent for any potential future donors.
Getting close, Mr. West.
I hope you'll recognize the importance of honoring Ms. Ellis's specific wishes, and vote no on this article. A no vote sends the town a message, the message that we should follow the donor's wishes and find a way to repurpose the buildings on our property to the benefit of the children of Chatham. And please note that two of our selectmen also voted against this article.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Appreciate it.
Speaking of, of Select Board members, Mr. Nacastro, who's undisguised there with the hood and the hat. Mr. Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to talk about the intent of the donor, it may have expired, but I, I think we should honor it. Others are going to speak to that. And I want to say that, um, one of the reasons that I voted against this article was that, as we've heard earlier today, the Chatham Elementary, the future of the Chatham Elementary School is in flux. We have a senior center project, uh, which includes two proposals that involve potential usage of the Community Center for recreational programs and otherwise. I think taking this property out of circulation, when its adjacency to those particular facilities makes it suitable for potential use, uh, in, in the area of recreation, which would be consistent with Ms. Ellis's intent, is, is a good, is, is, is not a good thing to do. The second, the, the second point I want to make is, uh, I think this property might very well be under-assessed, because the, um, lot, the lot, um, amount, the acreage amount on the assessors' records differs significantly from what's in the deed, and from what's in the, uh, uh, map that is in the warrant. And that really needs to be sorted out. So I, I think this is a, a very bad article. Uh, I urge a negative vote on it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Ms. Frye.
Good evening. Meredith Frye, Chair of Parks and Recreation Commission. Again, the property at 127 Old Harbor Road was bequeathed to the town of Chatham by Marion Nickerson Ellis, and she states that no building except those on her property at her demise be allowed. The gift of her land is to be used as an additional playground and recreation area for the school and the children. The school is operational and still exists, and so do the children. How can the town declare this donated property as surplus? It is morally and philosophically wrong. I have been working with JAM, Junior Arts and Music, a 501(c) nonprofit organization which offers art and music enrichment to families in need and youth at risk. The building and barn could be used by Parks and Recreation and Monomoy Community Services and allow Parks and Recreation and Monomoy Community Services, sorry, long day, services to expand its services and summer programs and camps. We can partner with JAM. The barn could be used to host programs, and the house could be used for counseling, as well as housing for teachers and visiting artists. The bottom line is, this is a bigger conversation. Let's think outside the box. This property is a gift to the children and the community.
Getting close, Ms. Frye.
Let's honor the wishes of Marion Nickerson Ellis, and vote no on Article 61. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Ms. Gibbs.
Uh, yes, Elaine Gibbs. I won't repeat a lot of what's just been said, but I absolutely agree that Mrs. Ellis's wishes were crystal clear, and the fact that she does not have heirs that can be here today to speak on her behalf should not be a reason to ignore those wishes. Uh, I think that it will have a chilling effect on people in the future donating land, thinking that they are preserving something for the future and finding out that that's not true. Uh, I think it's a question of situational ethics. It's really easy to be ethical and moral unless it's not. And I think that that's something that has to be continuous, and we cannot compromise on it. Uh, there's a misconception that this housing, we, that someone can designate, I've heard people say, "We want a teacher there, we want a young family there, we want a, a small business owner, we want a firefighter." You cannot do that. It is regulated by the state, it is a lottery system, you cannot pick and choose and discriminate against one class in favor of another. So if people think that this is going to go to a teacher, or go to a young family, that's not necessarily going to happen, so that should not be part of the equation. I urge you to vote no on this. I think it needs work. I think the fact that Mrs. Ellis was really clear about what she wanted should be honored. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Mr. Dykens, anyone who, who has anything new, we, I'm sure we'd all like to hear it. Mr. Dykens?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to remind the town meeting that last year we did vote to, uh, have affordable housing in, in, in this house. And I also want to note that the town has had control of that property for decades. This town has done basically nothing with that property for decades. And now we have the opportunity to meet one of our highest priorities in this town, which is affordable slash attainable housing in a vacant home here. Why in the world would we not repurpose this piece of property for affordable and attainable housing, and meet one of our most crying needs that we've heard as a theme throughout this town meeting? So I urge you to please support the repurposing of this, of this Ellis property into affordable and attainable housing, which we supported last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Harriet Prouse from Shattuck Place. Um, I'll, I agree with everything that's been said, I will just like add that Mrs. Ellis loved children, she loved Chatham, and she didn't have any children of her own. And so she looked around the neighborhood, and she helped the children in her neighborhood, she sent them to camp, she did other things for the children in her neighborhood. And then she looked out her windows, and she saw all those children in that school, and she said, "What can I do for all those children? And I'm going to donate my home, and I'm going, I want them to have a playground, I want them to be able to play and have fun and enjoy my property, because I didn't have children to enjoy it." And so I urge you, urge you to oppose this article. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Prouse. Mr. Oppenheimer.
Well, I'm going to disagree with just about everybody that's recently spoken. Um, we've never respected Mrs. Ellis's wishes with this property. It was the Water Department for, I don't know, 10, 15 years, and it's been sitting there and rotting for about 10 years. It's frozen up. Now I'm hearing, the, part of the property has been used for expansion, I believe, of playground, and it's been sitting there just going to seed, it's frozen at least once, maybe twice. Um, I think Mrs. Avalar, at last year's town meeting, said it completely well, she knew Mrs. Ellis, apparently, and she was in favor of children, but at the time, people did, could afford to live in this town and could afford to have their children go to school. So the thought of it being affordable housing for families, or whatever, Mrs. Gibbs is correct, there's no guarantees, but affordable housing is the major issue. We don't have kids in this town much, they're going away because there is no affordable housing. This, rather than letting this building rot away, and as one selectman talked about future uses for the school, the school has, the, the school has so much extra space in it already, there's plenty used to do everything. This is low-hanging fruit, it should be developed into maybe, and studied whether it's one unit, two. It was a house, it should be, continue to be a house, and, and perhaps an ADU or the other thing. I strongly, this is exactly, other people that were opposed to middle roads, that it should be spread around town, we should use what we have. We have it, we own it. If anything else, I bet, I don't know, Mrs. Ellis, never knew her, but I'll bet you she'd love to see it be used for something that's useful instead of rotting away all these years. I, I urge you to support this.
Thank you, Ms. Oppenheimer. I hear her voice, but first, that lady right there.
Uh, I'm Roz Coleman from 600 Orleans Road, and I want to support, uh, the group that talked about using that property for recreation, because let's, and also, thinking outside the box, I don't think we have made a decision yet on the Senior Center. And, uh, one of the things that has been talked about for the Senior Center is, uh, basically using the, the, uh, Community Center in some effective way. And if that happened, and we would need to find a place for those children who use the Community Center, why not have an enormous, lovely recreation center, uh, and have exercise and, and activities going on there in that contingent property? And then, why don't we use the Senior Center location for affordable housing? Why couldn't we have several units there of attainable housing, right there on, uh, where the Senior Center exists? Now, I just think that it's too soon, we need to have a plan that really incorporates all of our best properties and all of our best ideas, so that we get more affordable housing. And if we use that property for affordable housing, when we might be able to parlay it into kids over there, rather than in the Community Center, then we might have a better opportunity for the seniors. That's, I think it's just too soon. We need a big picture, and we need to think outside the box.
Thank you. Mrs. Avalar, and then the next person who wants to move the previous question will be recognized, Mrs. Avalar.
Okay, uh, back to Marion Nickerson. You know, we have futzed around with this so long, pretty soon the house will fall down and it will, we won't have a problem anymore. But you know, we have a problem with affordable housing. Marion Nickerson Ellis wanted to serve children. What better way can you serve a child than to give him a home?
Move the question. Uh, motion of the previous question, a motion to cut off debate. Thank you, Mrs. Avalar. Motion is to cut off debate. All those in favor of cutting off debates say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So, but unanimously, I never, ever allow people to just say move the question, except I make exceptions for certain things at 6:45. Uh, we will now vote on Article 61, which requires a two-thirds majority. The motion is as offered by Ms. Davis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Show of cards. All those in favor, raise your card, please. Thank you. And now those opposed? I believe there is a two-thirds majority, it is however, very close. Count, all right. Tellers, please come forward. All those in favor, it gives you a chance to exercise and get warm, so. All those in favor, raise your card, please keep it in the air until you have been counted. Thank you. And now those opposed, raise your card, please keep it in the air until you're quite sure you've been counted. Thank you. Very significant number of people thought that it would be impossible for us to do this in one session. And you are to be commended for proving them wrong. This was not easy, but democracy and participation isn't easy. Uh, it is important, and that you were willing to spend all day on a Saturday shows your devotion to the town, it also shows how loathe you were to have to come back tomorrow. You're to be commended for both. The vote under Article 61 is 81 ayes, 51 no. That is not a two-thirds majority. Article 61 does not prevail. Again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Mr. Kukolos, in your last act at a town meeting, would you like to move that we stand adjourned? Mr. Kukolos moves that we stand adjourned. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you all very much. That's all right.